I'd like to call order the regular city council meeting of Monday, August 23rd with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Acting City Clerk Brooks here. Councilmembers Ratty, Cimmin, Salerno, absent, Smith.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Manager Carey.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
The Councilwoman Ratty is here, should be in soon. Councilman Salerno, for those of you who weren't here at the first meeting, was called to jury duty today, so he may not be with us. Okay, next we have invocation by Speaker Pastor John Shelton from the Freedom Missionary Baptist Church. If you'd all stand, please. Come on up, Pastor.
Let us bow. Eternal God our Father, we come at this moment, at this time, to thank you for just blessing us with another day. We thank you for your love and your consideration toward us. Master, we ask for your hand to be upon this administration, upon this mayor, upon this council, that all decisions that be done, that they be done decently and in order. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks for those kind words, Pastor. If you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Schmidt, would you lay this place? Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay, next is comments from the public. I have no speaker cards. If there's anyone who wants to speak under comments from the public, please go up, fill out a card, and let me know, anyone? Okay. Approval of the agenda. Anyone want to take anything out of order?
I would like to.
Okay. Come on up. You have three minutes, and when you're done, the clerk will give you a card to fill out with your name on it, please. Come on up. Have a seat.
Oh, okay.
And make sure the microphone is on.
Is it on?
I think I've heard this before.
I think you have too. You'll be like, this is the last time. I've made the quinella. I've made the quinella, so this will be the last time. But, members of council, my name is Leo Horishny, and I wish to urge the Sparks City Council to make any changes to allow bicycles to trigger all traffic signals currently in place. The plans for the Reno Sparks Bicycle Pedestrian Plan are laudable, but they will take time, and currently there are too many lights currently that inconsistently respond to bicycles. As of August 13th, I have commuted over 100 times to work and over 1,800 miles locally. That's just back and forth from Sun Valley to Renown and around. I have had firsthand experience with two serious problems which I feel can be quickly addressed. Currently, it is not clear where cyclists should place themselves to trigger signal lights, but this information is available, but as it stands now, it is up to the individual cyclist to call the local municipality, contact the traffic engineer, and inform them as to where it is that they're supposed to place their bicycle to trigger a light if it triggers the lights. And this should not be the process. As a cyclist, we are required by statute to operate our vehicle on the roadways, but then this should necessitate that we be able to use the infrastructure as a vehicle also. When a cyclist is at an intersection but the light does not respond, this becomes a hazardous situation for the cyclist. Do they get off their vehicle to walk over to the pet signal, which is possibly there, and then back to their bike? Do they then ride over to the crosswalk to position themselves to walk across into the adjacent crosswalk? And this is not legally required for a cyclist to do in order to operate the vehicle. Do they look both ways then and then ride across the intersection, exposing themselves possibly to legal action, or if they miss something and get hit, possibly being legally at fault for crossing against the red light? This is largely an education matter, and since different sensors exist in the area, each of them should be described and instructions should be offered on how best to position oneself to activate a traffic sensor. When the sensor still does not respond, the cyclist should be advised to notify the appropriate municipality of the sensor malfunction and have it corrected. If there is a sensor where a sensor, if there's an intersection where a sensor cannot be visibly seen, some sort of marking should be put in place to inform the motorists and cyclists where they should be stopped in order to trigger the signal light. The recent efforts by the municipalities and RTC to expand and create new bike lanes is very much appreciated, but the increase in cycling traffic exposes more and more cyclists to traffic signals which do not respond to legitimate use of the roadways. The other matter that is a concern to cyclists in controlled intersections is the timing of yellow lights. Currently, they primarily respond to the movement of one car through that intersection, and I have been through several intersections, especially three lanes or larger, where I barely make it halfway through the intersection before the light cycles and goes through. I am concerned that then I am in legal jeopardy and at worst in physical jeopardy from someone in the cross traffic who jumps the light and strikes me with their vehicle. At the very least, intersections with bike lanes should have adjustments of their yellow timing so that a cyclist can make it safely and legally through a controlled intersection. I have also found myself, when at speed, coming up to a light, and if I'm close to an intersection, that I have to continue because I cannot stop without then finding myself in the middle of the intersection. I have not yet had any negative experience from drivers locally in these situations I described, but I can't help that some of the anger expressed about cyclists not following traffic laws might not be the result of an uninformed motorist misjudging that cyclist's actions. I do not want to find myself in one of those situations, but currently I know it's only a matter of time before it does happen. Thank you.
Thank you. So you'll leave that with the clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll go to approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Motion to approve the agenda is written. Second?
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, before we get into the agenda, we've got a couple of items that I'd like to take. First of all, many of you may not know, but there's a person here today that's been reporting the news for the Tribune for a long time. That's going to be here for her last meeting. So, I want to thank Sarah Cooper, who's in the back of the room, who's done an outstanding job, always been very, very professional in her interviews and things, and reports the news in a fair and balanced way. I believe that's my opinion. I don't know what other people will say, but that's what I feel. And I want to thank Sarah. She's going to be moving on to bigger and better things. So thank you so much for all the things you've done for the city of Sparks. We appreciate it. And Sarah, you're moving to where again? Come on down.
Be the news.
I thought I could hide behind the camera.
Now make sure that you report this. Okay.
It'll be in tomorrow's Sparks Tribune.
Okay, good.
For the record, my name is Sarah Cooper Glenn now. I've been a reporter for the Sparks Tribune for three years, and I will be moving to Newcastle, England with my husband, as he's in his second week of medical school there, but I'll be joining him.
Well, good luck in whatever you do. I'm sure you'll be able to find a reporting job in England, so.
Already have a couple of leads.
Good. Well, thanks for all you've done. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for being fair and open with me, and appreciate the communication that I've had with the city and your openness, and I would hope that that would continue through whoever my predecessor is.
It will.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, next, Adam Mayberry has a quick presentation to make. We'll be with you in a minute, Mary. Sorry.
I know you are.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. Adam Mayberry, your Community Relations Manager. I want to introduce these two gentlemen, along with their interpreter. These two gentlemen are from the country of Armenia. Mr. Forgive me here. Mr. Artak Davitan is with us. Brief introduction of Mr. Davitan is he was elected a deputy of the National Assembly by the proportional electoral system from the Republican Party of Armenia in 2007. He is interested in the role of political parties and aspects of accountability. And Mr. Armin Martiris.
Martiris.
Armin Martiris, are you in? Progressed from a regular party member in 2006 to an MP and the chairperson of the Board of the Oppositional Heritage Party. He's interested in strengthening his knowledge in the field of legislation as well as the U.S. electoral process and organization. These gentlemen come to us from UNR's Northern Nevada Center, Northern Nevada International Center, and they're spending a day in our area, learning about government, local government, and they're spending a little time here in Sparks and observing you in action. So you're welcome to say a few words, and if you have any questions, they're here for you.
Welcome.
We thank you very much, the city of Sparks. So we are already familiar to the government system in Nevada. We visited the state capital, and we had other meetings a few days ago. And I would like to say that you have a very good government system in Nevada. Of course, it's not perfect, but nothing is perfect. You're getting there.
We already know it's not perfect. You're going to get here one day and figure that out.
So there are a lot of things for us to learn. Your local government system is very, very good. And the best is the people, people like you that we met throughout our visit. And we wish you all the best, and we wish prosperity to your city, city of Sparks. And the area geographically and the nature is very similar to our country, because we keep on saying it looks like our hills, it looks like our mountains. And we also have a lake, like the lake you have close by Lake Tahoe.
Any questions for the gentlemen?
Welcome.
Welcome. We appreciate you visiting our fine city and hope to see you again sometime.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, one more business item, then you're up, Mary. Recommendation to approve minutes of the regular meeting of July 26th. Any additions or corrections? Mr. Schmidt?
Move to approve.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 26th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Presentation items: Presentation of rebate check from NV Energy for solar installations at two fire stations, Mr. Etchar and Mary Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to be here for the final element of the two completed solar installations at fire station number four and five. For a little background on these projects, each fire station is approximately 37 kilowatts installation, which will provide between 80 to 90 percent of the current electrical needs at the fire stations. These solar panels will save the city approximately $14,000 to $15,000 a year at current energy prices. These rebates from NV Energy will pay 87 percent of the total cost of installation. The rest of the project costs came from the rebate we received from NV Energy for the Larry Johnson Solar Project. No other city funds were used for these projects. These rebates from NV Energy are of great value to the city and our drive for financial and environmental sustainability. I would like to thank NV Energy for their valuable assistance on these projects and their work to provide more energy-saving opportunities for the city. I would also like to thank a few people for their great work on these projects. First, I'd like to thank Chad Dickerson, Stephen Reed Hamilton, Marcy Blotsky, and Bob Stevens of Steve C. Hamilton, Inc., our contractor on these projects. They have done an excellent job for the city, and I look forward to our future projects. I would also like to thank Tom Garrison and Frank Freevalt of the Fire Department for their assistance, and the Purchasing and Finance Department for their continued help. These projects would not happen without their valuable assistance. I would also like to thank and recognize Brian Case, our day-to-day project manager on these projects. And with that, I'd like to introduce Mary Simmons, Vice President of External Affairs for NV Energy.
Thank you. Mayor Martini, City Councilman, Mr. Carey. For the record, I'm Mary Simmons with NV Energy, and first of all, I just want to congratulate the council, the great staff at the city of Sparks, the fire station staff, and the citizens of the city of Sparks for their continued support and commitment to renewable energy. You really have done a great job, as evidenced by the number of times we're here and hope to be here again. At the end of this, we will give you the rebate check, but just a few more statistics for you. The installations will also hopefully provide about 120,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity in a year, and that's enough to power about 13 homes. So that gives you a little bit of perspective also on the size of that installation. And as a result of installing solar panels, you also help us out by us not having to build more power plants and that type of thing, and it also reduces the emissions for everyone in the surrounding areas. So up to about 90 tons of carbon is going to be saved as a result of this installation. Our program, which we're very happy to talk about, has also installed since 2004 623 solar projects throughout the state, which is about 5 megawatts of electricity throughout our state, and we provided about $17 million in rebates. As was mentioned earlier, we did present a check for the Larry Johnson Center, which I think was a great project for the city of Sparks also, so congratulations on that. We know there are many more projects. We're looking forward to that. There's lots of them in the pipeline, so maybe you'll have to see me again with some more money. But today we have a check for $300,000 to present to you, and again, congratulations for all your commitment to this program. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. We'd like to see you once a month with a check for $300,000 if you'd be fine with us. So if you want to come up, we'll get a picture with all the council and everybody.
It's you, big pal. Come on. I'm not very footy, Joe.
Okay, thanks. Thanks to everyone from NV Energy and Spark City staff and everyone. Good job. Well done. Okay, 4.2. Thanks, Pete. Final report on the 2010 Census operations. Mr. Byerman and Michael Moreno and crew.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Good afternoon. For the record, Dave Byerman, Chief Government Liaison for Nevada for the U.S. Census Bureau. And that, Mr. Mayor, is probably the last time I will introduce myself that way before a city council. This will be my final week with the Census Bureau. I don't know if you saw on the news last week, Senator Horstford appointed me as the new Secretary of the Senate for the Nevada State Senate, and I'll be starting that new role beginning next Monday.
So you've got a real job now. We're going to see here, well, I won't, but we'll be back in 10 years.
One that is in the state constitution, this new job. So I'm really looking forward to the new challenge, but as you know, this has been a labor of love for me for the last two years, a job that I sincerely believe is extremely important, and an effort that is extremely important for all of us across the state. I wanted to be here today to not only give you a final wrap-up presentation on the operations, but also to recognize the work of this city, of the Washoe Counts 2010 Committee, of whom Michael Moreno, who joins me up here, was the chairman, and the work of your staff, Mr. Mayor, of the work that has been going on for the last year or two to make this census a success. In terms of where we are in the process right now, as you all know, we mailed out these questionnaires in March, and beginning May 1st and running through the end of June, we actually did a process called non-response follow-up, where we went out and knocked on doors to try to get the remaining population counted. The count, the response rate for Sparks went up from 71 to 74 percent, which is above the state average and above the national average, so Sparks did quite well. Throughout the month of July, we went through a process called vacant delete check, where we double and sometimes triple-checked every household that we identified as being vacant. That is especially important for a state like Nevada that has so many people that are moving around, a very transient population, and frankly, with the housing and foreclosure crisis, that part of the count process was especially important for us here to make sure that houses that we recorded as vacant were truly vacant on April 1st. By the end of next month, all of our Nevada operations will cease, our offices will be closed, and will lead up to December 31st of this year, which is the date as of which we should learn if Nevada receives a fourth congressional seat as a direct result of this process. That is the date that the Director of the Census Bureau and the Secretary of Commerce will meet with the President and deliver those statewide numbers. And then spring of next year is when we'll start getting the breakdown on a more local level, when the governor and the majority and minority leaders of both the Assembly and the State Senate will be delivered the reapportionment and redistricting data that will then be used to draw the maps for the next session of the state legislature and for the U.S. congressional seats as well. We had some tremendous accomplishments working collaboratively with local governments, nonprofits, and businesses across the state. As you all know, I might be a federal employee, but I've always been very skeptical of the federal government's ability to communicate with folks in the West and with Nevadans in particular. So we really went our own way when it came to doing outreach about the census. We have the statewide campaign, but it really didn't communicate, in my opinion, what was practically at stake about the census for us here in Nevada. So we identified a source of funding, about $1 million. It did not come from the general fund, but it came from a legal settlement that ultimately we were able to figure out through the Secretary of State's office that we could use for this purpose, and we used that funding to try to tell the story of why this was so important for us here in Nevada. I don't have a check to present to you today for $300,000, but as you all know, every person that we missed in the census was worth $917 per person per year, $9,000 over 10 years. The work that the Sage Commission, the Governor's Blue Ribbon Panel that looks at smart energy, government efficiency things to do, determined that for that $1 million investment, Nevada stood to gain about $500 million over the next 10 years. So a very smart thing for us to do. We built over 1,500 partnerships across the state of Nevada with a variety of stakeholders, really focusing on those populations that are least likely to respond to the census form, and ultimately, we had a tremendous impact on the operations themselves. We set up 325 questionnaire assistance centers where people could drop in and get help from a census employee who was sworn to secrecy to help them to actually fill out that form, 400 sites where people could drop by and pick up census forms in six different languages with 59 different language guides, $3.5 million in in-kind donations altogether, media coverage that was second to none. The media clearly understood the importance of this story, and this all culminated in what we called our March to the Mailbox last effort, which was more of a grassroots mobilization, letting people know exactly what was at stake and to try to get them to literally take that form, bring it down to the mailbox, and put it in the mail. We conducted the census in different ways in different parts of Nevada. As you can see from this map, most of Nevada geographically was hand-delivered a questionnaire in what we called update-leave, but in terms of the population, 90 percent of Nevada was mailed the questionnaire in the mail. That's mostly here in northwestern Nevada and also in southern Nevada. 1 percent of the state was enumerated just through a simple interview. That was mostly the Native American tribes. We did have four local census offices across the state. Mike Geisinger is here from our Reno local census office. He was the local census office manager. I'd like to commend Mike and his entire team. They did an outstanding job of really helping to hit all of our deadlines, hit all these intermediate goals, and to do the census in a very accountable and responsible manner. The morale in that office was really second to none. This is a very busy chart, but you actually have a copy in your packet. But what I mostly wanted to communicate by putting this on the screen is that the census data will not come out in one fell swoop next spring, but it'll come out gradually over the next several years. But what I want to pay particular attention to is that SF1, Summary File 1, that's in the top right corner of this graphic, that should come out next June, July, August. That is really where the action's at, in terms of economic development, in terms of understanding how Sparks has changed over the last 10 years. That's where we'll really get access to all those cross tabs, not just, for example, how many Hispanics we have in Sparks, but what proportion of that population is 18 to 24? What proportion of that population is in a single-parent household? You know, all of the different things that we need to learn in order to determine how best government can provide services and to understand how economic development can be accomplished by understanding how the community has changed over time. This is how that demographic file will look when it comes out. This is an example from Denver, Colorado, but it could be for any city, state, municipality, county, you name it. But we will have all of this data with all of these different subtotals, which will really give your demographers, planners, and you as elected officials, a lot more information about your constituencies. So just to wrap up my portion before I introduce Michael, I want to thank the city of Sparks for its invaluable support. We all know the stakes were high. We all know that we could only accomplish this if we built a grassroots campaign that involved people from many different walks of life. We successfully ultimately recruited 6,200 people across the state to come work for the census. These were people who worked from every walk of life imaginable, and they really, for the most part, worked their own neighborhoods. We had people from Sparks counting people from Sparks, and that's the best way to accomplish this. Ultimately, from my perspective, the best way to measure whether or not we were successful is what proportion of the population mailed that form in voluntarily. Nevada was one of only two states in the entire Rocky Mountain region, which goes from the Dakotas up north, all the way down to Arizona and New Mexico to the south, one of only two states to match its 2,000 response rate in 2010. But you know, I'm not usually one to say that having the same response rate is a victory. In this case, though, with the economic crisis that we face statewide, with the housing and foreclosure crisis that we are faced with, with the aftermath of 9/11 and the Patriot Act, and the fact that philosophically many people just did not trust this process and did not trust the Census Bureau to keep this information confidential, for us to still have been able to maintain the same level of participation from the public, I think was a real accomplishment for all of us. That could not have been accomplished without the work of the Washoe Counts 2010 Committee, and I'd like to introduce Michael Moreno, who is the Chair of that committee, to talk briefly about what they did and what worked for us in this campaign. Michael?
Thank you, David. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Just to echo what David had said, we had a group of 20 volunteers from Washoe County, from the cities of Reno and Sparks, and we did a very strategic and comprehensive effort to get the word out on the importance of the census. I too want to thank you and Mr. Mayor. I know that you've joined us in a few events for the census, and we really appreciated that. But I also want to give recognition to the volunteers of the Washoe Counts 2010 Complete Count Committee. Without their work and their passion to make a difference right here in our community, we could not do the job that we were able to accomplish. I also want to thank David as representing the U.S. Census Bureau, as well as Mike Geisinger for the local census office. We had a great partnership working with them and their partnership specialists to help us get the word out. I'd be remiss if I did not thank the local media, because they were instrumental in helping us get the message out about the importance of the census. Finally, I do want to point out that Adam Mayberry was representing the city of Sparks on the Washoe Counts 2010 Committee, so thank you to Adam. And finally, I don't have a check, but I've got a CD. And this is the work product of Washoe Counts 2010 for you to keep in the archives here at the city of Sparks. Again, thank you, and thanks to the citizens of Washoe County for making this census really count.
Mr. Mayor, to wrap up, I do also have, we wear federal bureaucrats bearing gifts, but I do have a plaque that commemorates the city of Sparks as one of our top partners across the state. I was asked to identify about 40 or so partners that really went above and beyond. Adam Mayberry from your staff and yourself, Mr. Mayor, really were very accessible and ubiquitous on our behalf out there in the community, talking about the importance of this issue. The city of Sparks really rose to the top of my list in terms of cities that were the most engaged in this process, and we want to thank you for the leadership that you showed.
Thanks, David, and thanks, Michael. You know, I've been called a lot of things, David, but never ubiquitous. Silver lining in every cloud, I guess. But thank you for your hard work, and Michael, thank you for yours, Mr. Geisinger. I'm sorry. Thank you, and we're happy that it came out as well as it did, and we're glad to be partners. So thanks a lot. Appreciate it. I forgot to ask, anybody have any questions on the council? You're off the hook, pal. Good to see you. Okay, let's move on to presentation 4.3, presentation on the work of the Sparks Charter Committee. Mr. Tanner, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, sound. Am I there?
I'm now there. I've never been accused of not being able to be heard before.
I've never been accused of not being able to be heard before. Thank you for having me. This is an advisory position only to report out on the 2010 City Charter Committee and what we accomplished and what we didn't accomplish this year. We had a number of items that we discussed, and we took no action. Ward boundary adjustments, mayor and council elections by ward or at large. We had a very spirited discussion on home rule and Dillon's Law. And we discussed the mayor, being a voting member of the council. All of those, we didn't take any action on to change the charter or recommend a change. We did, however, look back at our 2009 position, and we're going to forward that again to the legislature for their eminent wisdom and sage counsel. And that will be some minor, I call it happy-to-glad changes to the charter. Wording changes, a couple of substantive positions in there, the city manager powers to appoint certain personnel, change the method of selecting the mayor pro temp, and prohibitions on discrimination to included classes protected by the NRS. All those, as I said, are predominantly happy-to-glad, nothing substantive, certainly nothing fiscal. And we're in great hopes this year that that particular BDR will not be held hostage as it was last year. Now, having said we're going to do all of this, the vehicle by which we're going to carry that to the legislature is presenting an interesting dilemma right now. But we have a couple of calls out. As you know, our term limits have changed the number of people that we have available to go forward with that. But calls are out, no checks are in the mail, but I'm sure we'll be successful. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Ms. Cluidt and Mr. Driscoll for their eminent help as we went forward in this. They've always been a pleasure to work with. And at this point, are there any questions?
Questions for Mr. Tanner.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Mr. Carrigan, my apologies. It is somewhat past 15:30, 3:30 in the free world.
Okay. Thanks, Rand. Appreciate it. Appreciate all your hard work of your committee and yourself. Okay, moving on to consent items, 5.1 through 5.15. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item 5.14, please.
Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Move to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.13 and 5.15, excluding 5.14.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Move by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve all consent items other than 5.14. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 5.14, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to abstain on this item.
Okay. All right, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Move to approve consent item 5.14.
Do you have a second? Mr. Carrigan? Move by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve 5.14 is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes three to zero with one abstention. Mr. Schmidt? Okay. Moving on to general business, consideration and possible approval of a joint resolution of the Reno City Council, Sparks City Council, and the Washoe County Commission pledging commitment to continue the support efforts of Illegal Dumping Task Force. Mr. Mayor Berry and Ms. Chakarulu.
You got it.
I never know how to say your name.
Most people don't. It's okay.
Go ahead, Adam.
That makes two of us.
Yeah, exactly. It took me a while.
How's that working out for you? All right?
Good marriage.
Okay, good.
Councilmembers, Adam Mayberry, Community Relations Manager, for the record. The item you have before you is asking approval of a joint resolution for the Illegal Dumping Task Force that's organized by Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful. Kristi C. is the Executive Director.
Keep Trucking C.
Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful, she is here with us. I'll tell you a little bit more. The resolution is, there's no financial commitment to this. It's just simply a show of support and solidarity for the task force's efforts in terms of improving and protecting the integrity of our environment and raising awareness of the hazards of illegal dumping and how it obviously destroys our beautiful environment here in the Trucking Meadows. So, having said that, I'll turn the time over to Kristi.
Thank you, Adam, and thank you, Mayor and members of the Council for hearing this. As you have heard before, I've been back before. You can't hear me?
You have to give us your name for the record.
Right. Kristi Chakarulu.
Okay, Chakarulu.
Yeah, Executive Director of Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful. It's like Smith and Turkey. It's really common there. Anyways, you have heard me talk about illegal dumping before. It is an issue in our community. It's not only incitely and dangerous for the community, but it's also a fire hazard. It's something that has continued in our community for years. We have made great progress through the Illegal Dumping Task Force to fight, to work on prevention and to do cleanups. The community is cleaner overall, according to the litter index we did last week, but it's still an issue. And we're looking for support from this council as far as helping to educate the community and support our prevention efforts.
Okay. Questions for Adam or Kristi? Kristi? No questions? Okay. Looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
Move to approve the resolution as presented.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Agenda Item 6.1 is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Kristi, thanks for all you do in Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful. It's a great organization, and you guys do a wonderful job. I'm hoping that our index can get a little bit better. It was a little bit behind the other entities, but we'll work to get it better. So, thank you for all you do.
Oh, thank you. We're doing pretty good. And actually, I'd like to highlight the 329 dump hotline for the Sheriff's Department. I have flyers, if anyone's interested, and I'll leave them in the back of the room. Thank you so much for your support.
Thanks again. Appreciate it. Okay, 6.2, consideration possible authorization of the city attorney to initiate litigation seeking a mandatory injunction to eliminate the nuisance existing at 1640 A Street. Who's doing this? Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Present to our city charter, the city council has to approve the city attorney bringing an action in the Second Judicial District Court. I'm asking that the city council allow me to file a petition to eliminate the nuisance currently existing at 1640 A Street here in Sparks. And to aid you and to give you an idea as to the scope and magnitude of the dangers facing our citizenry because of this nuisance, we have Sparks Fire Marshal Robert King and Christina Olson from the Washoe County Health District. I'll let them explain the parameters of what we're looking at now.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the Council. Robert King, Fire Marshal, for record. And I'm here just to kind of give you a little chronological history of the fires that we've had at this particular house, at 1640 A Street, which is a vacant house. It's not necessarily an abandoned house. There's legal terms there of the difference of the two, but it is a vacant house. And I wanted to go over the chronological fire history, tell you a little bit about the codes that we're dealing with, trying to take care of this issue, and talk a little bit about our Sparks Vacant Building Task Force that we developed back in 2005 to handle issues like this. It started back in December 26, 2009, where we had a fire on the first, on the living room area of the house. The cause was undetermined at the time. The possible causes were cooking inside or an electrical heater. Now, this house at the time did not have gas or electric hooked up. It was vacant, and everything was shut off. During that fire, we did find that there was an extension cord that led from inside the house, it was hooked up to an electric heater, all the way over to the next-door neighbor's house, which was another house that was vacated, actually owned by somebody outside the state, but no renters at the time. Someone had hooked up an electric cord up to the light bulb outlet that you can get nowadays, and they were running an electrical heater inside the vacant house for that. So, the origin of the fire at that time was right around that area, and we really think that that's probably how it started. The house, at the end, when we were done, put out the fire. Nobody was there at the time of the fire, but put out the fire. We boarded the house up completely. It had a front door, had a back door. It has a basement down below, too, and an entrance from outside to the basement. Boarded everything up pretty tight. During the firefighting operations, there were some windows that had to be broken out in order to take care of it, as well as there were some windows broken out from other people. We boarded all those up, too. So, the place was secure when we left. January 13th, we have our second fire. This fire is in the basement, which the basement's pretty big. It's the whole bottom floor of this house, has a couple rooms in it and then a big open area. And the possible causes of that, again, were either cooking or using a torch to remove copper piping in there. We did find a bunch of copper piping missing from the last time we were in there, and some of it cramped and, you know, torn away. And we're thinking that possibly could have been it also, because we figured that the fire, which you can see in the picture on the screen now, started up in the rafter area of that basement. That's a picture of the basement down below, so you can see the devastation that that fire caused. So, once again, we boarded up the house completely as much as we could, using all the materials we had, screws, the whole bit. And, you know, just the best that we could to keep people out of it. It's the, the house itself is, it has a fence around it, but, you know, anyone can go right through the fence and get on into the area. And it has a garage in the back that faces an alley as well that you can get into. The doors aren't necessarily locked until we had them locked, until we put a house on there and locked them. Seven days later, January 20th, we were told that there were people back in the garage area back there. So, I went down there myself. Police went down there and did find some people in there. Ended up having to arrest one of them. They had a warrant on him. They were in there using it as a place to stay. It was cold. It's still January time, it's cold. They're using it as a place to stay. And again, we found another electrical cord that went from there over to some sheds where they had power on the next-door neighbor's yard. And, you know, they're trying to keep warm in there and doing whatever else they were with that electrical cord, too. So, we boarded at that time, then we boarded up the garage and fire taped it around and no trespassing and the whole bit. And then, on January 29th, the building department posted the house as unsafe to occupy. And we did that mainly not because the outside of the house had the possibility of collapse, but the inside of the house definitely had the possibility of collapse internally from the fire in the basement, that the floor above it was a living room, and there was a hole in that. You can actually see it in that picture right there, right above. There was a hole there. There's part of the hole as well. And then, there's the living room floor inside that, where it was pretty unstable. April 20th, Washoe County District Health Department went to the site by, we had odors that were complaints from the neighbors on odors and stuff on the site. And they deemed the grounds to be really a public health risk for vector control and odor nuisance. On the site itself, now we're finding drug paraphernalia, feces, inside the house, outside the house, all over the place. The outside of the house as well, from this picture, this picture was taken on June 8th, 2010. It's much worse now. The weeds and that, if we want to talk about weed complaints, and boy, do we get a lot of them, the weeds on this area now are at least this tall, all around the entire area. Some of the green that you see there is not green anymore. So, if there is a fire hazard, that's it right now. And I would really deem it a fire hazard now because of the amount of people that are going in and out of that yard. July 23rd, third fire. People are still getting in the house. They're still going, getting in through screwed-tight lock boards and the windows and all that. This fire was just, it was too difficult to find out what caused this fire because of the prior two fires. We know it started in the living room, and we think that they were probably cooking in there or maybe, I wouldn't think, trying to keep warm in July, but it was just too difficult to figure out the exact cause. People were seen leaving the building, but we could, we never caught who it was. So, we, the house and the grounds are, again, becoming just worse and worse, becoming a public health risk due to additional garbage and stuff that's around the house. So, been working with Chet in the legal office for quite some time now. We're trying to get this taken care of. I know there's a lot of legal issues with this. You know, Chet could probably go into that a lot more than I could, but of how to take care of it. But I think going forward with what we're asking now is the only way that we can do it, to try to either get this cleaned up, get it demolished, whatever it takes to bring the, take the hazard away. One of our first things we want to do is get it fenced off completely with a six-foot fence around the entire area to keep, try to keep people out of there. We're doing our best by boarding it up as much as we can, but they're still getting in that way. A little bit, just real quick, a little bit about the Vacant Building Task Force. Back in 2005, we actually developed a Vacant Building Task Force for this reason, to take care of buildings that become vacant. And nowadays, we're getting more and more of them. Some of the objectives were to determine that the building is secure. We've tried to do that, and it's been unsuccessful each time. People are still getting in. Identify hazards that require immediate corrective action. We've done that. We've corrected them at the time, and we're still getting problems. Evaluate fire growth potential of building. You can see by the pictures there, it's there. Fire growth is definitely there. Evaluate potential for structural collapse. The outside of the building, as I mentioned, probably doesn't have potential for structural collapse, but the inside definitely does if people go inside. Identify conditions that could be hazardous to personnel entering the building, such as fire, police, and EMS. It's definitely there. Just not only the collapse, but all the paraphernalia and stuff that we're finding in there, human feces, it's just not good. And to determine the building or property is a community nuisance. I think that's very obvious right now. So, we've done that. Here's some more of the pictures of the outside of the building. As I mentioned, this is back in June. All that green grass there is definitely dead and brown now because it's not being watered, and it's doubled the height. There's other things out there, such as refrigerators and things that I know District Health has issues with as well. That's the garage in the back that faces the alley, and you can see it had been, or no, that's actually the west side of the house that was boarded up at one time. There's one of the pictures of the, all the garage, the garbage and debris that's outside is still sitting there today. It's the inside living room after the fire on July 23rd. This was at the beginning when we posted it, when it did have a front-screen door. It doesn't have it now. There's that hole, one of the holes in the living room floor that was caused by the fire in the basement below. Just more outside pictures. That was one of the fires that we had going inside. That's from the back of the house. And right to the bottom-left corner of that is where the basement entrance is. Quite a big basement, too. And you see couches and different things that have been just left there. And that's back to the original picture. Does she have anything you want to talk about?
Sure. Hi, just for the record, I'm Christina Olson with the Washoe County Health Department. And our concern here is, in fact, the solid waste where the picture you just saw. When people start dumping trash and debris, more people come and more, again, bigger, 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 and we have bigger vector issues, especially in the summer. So, that's pretty much where we're coming from, because it is, in fact, going out into the alley now, and now we have four complaints open from just the neighboring citizens.
Okay. Anything else, Chet?
Fire Marshal.
Fire Marshal King, I don't know if you, uh, alluded to this or not, I've been going through my notes. What type of dangers are currently facing firefighters in the event that another fire should occur here?
Uh, well, for the inside of the house, one of the biggest dangers right now is the collapse of the living room floor. Just, uh, either coming in from the front or the rear, either one. Uh, it's really unstable right now for anybody to go in there. Um, I'm surprised that on the last fire really that we didn't find someone down in the basement with the floor. That's one of the biggest issues. Um, and then just the, if you want to call it hazmat, the, all the other issues inside the house that's, uh, becoming more and more. There's more and more of that becoming prevalent inside and, which is a danger to anybody that goes inside.
And Ms. Olson, uh, what type of recourse can the Washoe County Health District, uh, what can they do to abate this type of situation? Or?
The fence would definitely take care of the problem as far as we, first you need to do cleanup obviously to remove the issue and then put the fence up to further, you know, not let more people coming in there. But we would be responding like he was saying for the hazmat. Washoe County would still respond for hazmat in case there's unknowns in there. It sounds like there is.
Do you have any financial resources that you could use, your department could use to assist in this?
I doubt it.
Okay.
Okay, questions? Mr. Carrigan?
This is for our city attorney. Chet, I noticed that you spent a lot of time sending out letters to try to find out who owned the house. Do, do you ever find out who owns it so we can bill them?
No, no. We've sent out, uh, several letters to the last known owners. Bank of America was also on the title at one time. They've since contacted our office indicating that they have no interest in this. There was a recon trust, which it looks like Bank of America sold its interest to recon trust. Recon trust, uh, the first time I sent out certified letters, no response. The second time, uh, I sent them out to the president, vice president, secretary treasurer of the corporation, those all came back undelivered. The letters that I'd sent to recon trust legal department in Texas have not been returned, but then again, I've received nothing back from them. Um, in the meantime, we have published notice in the, uh, local newspaper, the Sparks Tribune. We have since pu, uh, filed, uh, recorded several notices on, uh, on the title. Again, no response, uh, from, from anyone. So, um, I, I believe our best bet, if litigation is the way that the city council would like to go, is to once again prepare the summons, complaint, file them, publish the summons and complaint. And then, uh, and we receive no notification from anyone, we'll seek a default and go from there. Depending on what the city council wants to do. Uh, if you want to immediately fence the area now, we can go, uh, that route. That's going to be about a thousand dollars every six months from the courts that we've received. Ultimately, I can ask the court that we be allowed to demolish the structure. In that case, the city council will, uh, incur the costs of, or the city will incur the cost of about a hundred thousand dollars. The only way I can secure those costs is to ask it, ask the court one more time to put a lien on the property. One thing that, uh, Fire Marshal King didn't bring up, and I don't expect him to bring it up, but every time that we respond, it's costing the city money. We spent, uh, close to, how much in firefighting?
I think it was up to over three thousand dollars?
Three thousand.
So far? Yeah, around thirty-five hundred dollars.
So between firefighting and the publication costs and the filing of the liens and the certified mail, we're into this about five thousand dollars right now.
So can we, uh, if we never find out who owns that house, can we put a lien? I mean, I, I know the property's got to be worth something. The house may not, but the land's got to be worth something. Can we take that over or?
I don't know if we, if we necessarily want to take it over now, I mean, we could file a lien on it. And then the lien is only going to be good for about six years. Don't have to refile again, but anytime anybody wanted to buy the property, that's when they would have to reimburse the city for the cost that we've, we've spent on this.
Okay. That was my question. We, it, sometimes this property become ours after we go through the process, tear it down and?
No.
I mean, I, I don't know that we want it, but try.
I don't know if you want to go through eminent domain to acquire the property. I know that it was suggested that maybe we could use this as, as part of a firefighting, uh, you know, uh, something for firefighting purposes or fire department purposes, but it's acquiring title and I think the only way we could acquire title is through eminent domain. All else, our real property expert over here.
So obviously there's some, uh, some value to the property. I don't know if we really want it. Maybe it could be something for, we could donate it to Habitat for Humanity or something. They could build another nice house there or something. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple calls that I've gotten on it. Um, it's, it appears that the taxes were just paid a couple weeks ago.
Interesting, yes. I forgot to bring that up. And they have been paid. We've contacted the office, it's paying the, paying the taxes.
Okay, so we, we have a, we have an address and somebody who wrote a check?
No, we, we've got a tax paying service. I think it's out of Santa Clara, California, that's, that's making these payments. And, and we've contacted them, telling them, you know, who we are, what we're doing, situation of property, who is it that you're paying these taxes on, uh, for? And again, no response from them.
And my, my second question comes to, I'm not sure who did your, your estimates in here on cost of taking care of this, this item, but on, if someone was come in and remodel the property, is the shell structurally sound? The shell, the block walls, the footings or the basement walls, all that stuff, is that all structurally sound?
That we do not know yet because we have not had an engineer, an engineering report actually conducted on it. The building department did visit the site. Uh, we took them there and, and they looked inside and, and definitely were, were able to deem it as unsafe, um, right now, but, uh, you would need an engineering report conducted on this building.
Because my, because my question is, you know, are we throwing the baby without, out with the bathwater here? I mean, you have a house, you have a structure. Obviously we got the ownership issues, trying to figure that out, but if there's, if somebody's going to walk on in and say this house is salvageable because the exterior, all the basement walls, all that stuff is structurally sound, but yet they came in and tore down my whole house instead of, you know, they spent seventy-five thousand dollars tearing down the house when we could have put seventy-five thousand on the interior and had the house completely remodeled, a new, new interior done to the house. I mean, it's, what is structurally wrong with it? The, the issue is, we shouldn't have anybody else in there because the floors are structurally unsound. But I haven't heard anything that the building itself is structurally unsound.
What I can tell you is our building department went in there and the certificate of occupancy has been revoked.
And I understand, and that should, and it should be. I mean, it's not a livable situation. I'm just looking at this from a, a construction point of view. I mean, or could, could we end up in a legal situation later on because they said, because nobody has a report saying that, that the shell of this house was just fine? That it, all it needed to do was tear out the inside of it, rebuild it, and we were done. I mean, it could have been, it could have been saved because you're, um, you know, that, that's a, so first off, it's an awful lot of money to tear down a house. I don't know who did the estimate on that, but that's probably, you know, not even close to being accurate. Um, but I think there has to be taken a look at it, you know, structurally what is wrong? And are you tearing the whole thing down because of an interior problem when you can, uh, find a way to secure the property where people aren't getting in there until we work through the legal situations and let the proper owner take care of it?
I think that's what we're working towards, aren't we not?
But again, that's, I was moving to demolish the place, fill it up, get rid of the asbestos and, you know, sell the bricks for, for.
Yeah, bricks.
You know, if it's worth something.
Yeah.
And as Councilman Schmidt points out, it's got to be worth something to somebody that taxes are being paid on. So, I guess my question to the city council is, if you want me to litigate this, what is it that you want me to ask? Do you want to have the premises cleaned up? Um, gutted? Uh, leave the shell? Uh, have an engineering? Uh, yeah, I mean, we can do whatever we want as long as the court says it, it's okay. And if nobody's going to respond to the summons and complaint, there's a pretty good chance that the court is going to say okay. But I just need some direction because right now, my relief is asking the court to mitigate this nuisance and, uh, through demolition. But if you want to, uh, go in and, I mean, I can ask the court that we be allowed to go in, gut it, um, seal it up and then, uh, clean up the area to it meets, until it meets the, uh, requirements of the Washoe County Health District. And then are we going to be a, um, uh, like a landlord to this? I mean, are we going to clean it up, gut it out, and then just fence it off and, and hopefully, uh, maintain it? Because now we're assuming some additional liabilities.
Yes, it's forever.
I mean, if we clean it up, we gut it out, put some fences around it, and somebody does come in and injure themselves, who are they going to look at? Who are you going to call? You know, make the first step, pick, pick the P.I. lawyer of your choice.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, so, you know, I, I don't know. Is it, is it going to be an attractive nuisance or what? So, I don't know. But you tell me. I'm just the lawyer around here.
Yeah, we got a nuisance, let's make it an attractive nuisance now. That, that's good. Uh, Ms. Ratty?
I've got a couple, couple questions. Um, first of all, if there weren't any fire issues and this was just landing in, it was only brought to the attention of the local government because of the health department issues, do you have the authority because it isn't, yours is more an imminent health and safety issue in terms of the vector problems? Do you have the authority to go and clean up? And I, of course, I'm thinking of the Butcher Boy.
We require the property owner to do cleanup.
But if you can't get a property owner and it's causing a hazard for the community, then what happens?
Not a whole lot. I mean, we're having that with illegal dumpings out in the desert and for parcels that are owned by people, but we can't get anything done. So, you know, we, we, we try, but we, and we have the regulations in place, but we can't always find the people to do the work.
And with Butcher Boy, you were basically in the same position where you had to choose to spend county dollars to mitigate. So, it seems like there's a, there's a process to get there if it gets to a level that is...
I'm sure there is. I've just never had to do it. I've always found the property owners at some point.
Right, property owner. And then I guess the second question that I have, and it, this sort of gets to the line of questioning that Councilman Schmidt's going down in terms of whether there's value in saving some of that value, maybe more from a neighborhood preservation standpoint. I mean, I think if it gets torn down and it's an empty lot and it's weeds and we still don't have an owner, it's going to be a continuing problem. Whereas if there's some market value to this and somebody at some point rehab's it, then there's hope for that block. That, that's kind of my challenge. My other question really though, and this is maybe for you, Chet, from a legal standpoint, is what distinguishes this property from so many others that are exactly like it? I can think of just four off the top of my head within a four to eight block walk from my house that look exactly like that. I mean, they're, they're boarded up, they're attractive nuisances for lack of a better way to describe it. They haven't been maybe discovered by the folks who would make use of that nuisance yet, but they're, they're just waiting to be this property. And so I'm, I'm concerned about a path we're going to go down of having some very set sort of definable levels of, you know, and to me, part of it seems like the inability to secure it. That certainly seems like an issue for this house. But again, there's a lot of, there's a lot of houses in our city that look very similar to this one.
There, there are a few other houses that, that look like this. I don't know if they look as bad as this one, but they're, I think the difference on this one is where it's located. Um, we definitely have a population of people that, uh, go through there, that, that go in and out of that house and try to use it as, uh, an area to live and whatever else. Um, it's just, I think the location is, is one of the biggest unique issues with this one. Not only with the house, but with the garage in the back. Uh, the garage in the back is a great area for them to get into as well. Um, one of the, if, if it's going, if it goes down a road that we're looking at the structural stability, maybe it, maybe it comes out that that's okay of, of the shell, then I would just highly suggest that, that the, uh, the house, that we hire someone to do a professional, um, boarding up of the house instead of just screws and, and that that we're trying to do ourselves. Because there's people that can come in there and do a very professional way and, but you're actually going into the brick and you're, you're putting in bolts and, you know, where it's much more difficult to get in that way. Um, if we don't do that, we'll continue to have people getting in no matter what. Because they are. I mean, we've screwed it really tight and they're still, they're still getting in.
Can you clarify, when you say location, is it because it's a bit off the beaten track, tucked back there by the freeway or is it sort of the general location?
Yeah, it's tucked back and it, um, the alley back there is, is an area that we've just seen a lot of, a lot of people go back and forth, living back there, um, in different areas. I know we've seen that in other places down too.
I think this is referred to as being in a transient corridor. Being, I mean, it's right next to I-8.
Supposed to be a transit oriented corridor?
As compared to a transit oriented corridor.
It's a Todd corridor.
Yeah.
Mr. Schmidt?
You know, the difference in this property and maybe some of the other similar properties might be that we can identify an owner. And I, I think if we went in and cleaned this thing up completely, I don't even know if we have the legal right to sell it afterwards if somebody wants to go in and do that. So, if it is a nuisance and you can prove that to a judge, I would say pull it down and get rid of it. If it's not a nuisance after it's cleaned up and we could sell it, but if somebody's paying taxes on it, I, I can't imagine we could do my, we could, they show up and say, hey, thanks for building me a new house.
Well, that's, that's, that's fifty dollar question. I think, uh, both yours and Councilman Schmidt's, uh, concerns are, are well founded. In other words, somebody's paying the taxes on it. I don't know who. Now legally, you know, we can say, give notice, you know, to the, to everybody in the county of Washoe and that's enough. Alternatively, before you, if, if you're going to fix it up, it's always better, I think, to own it. In that case, it might be a good idea now, in this condition, to have it appraised and initiate some type of condemnation proceedings if this is a property that the city wants. And we could, you know, get it now while it's at fire sale prices.
So to speak.
See, and I would think that, not to interrupt you, but I would say, clean it up first, fence it up, and then move on with whatever we're going to do. But it's got to be cleaned up.
Exactly.
And, and you know, garbage breeds garbage.
And fences are amazingly effective.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a motion. If you want to, you can take this as a motion. Let's, let's try to get it cleaned up, completely cleaned up, uh, inside and out, and then we'll move on with what we need to do.
Second for discussion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Motion on the floor by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Discussion, uh, let's see, first up we have Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, because I was going to come along that line, I just have maybe a little bit disagreement with it. I think that the, the, the path that I'd like to see is obviously everything around cleaned up, you know, the trees torn out, brushes and all that. We're talking a few thousand dollars go in there and take care of that. Thousand dollars to rent the fence, they're no guarantee, believe me. I know six-foot fences around there, they're cutting locks or breaking into them to get in, but at least you deter ninety percent of them. You know, uh, look at having the professional boarding on up done. I'm not in favor of going inside and doing anything inside because that, that puts us at a, you know, going in bidding, taking live builders and stuff like that. But boarding, professionally boarding up, that's what it takes to lock the place up. And then that buys us the legal time to, to go through and decide which we want to do. If we want to condemn the place, if we want to, you know, eminent domain, whatever the, the options are, then, then hopefully, by that time, you know, that we've flushed out who the owners are, then my question, and I want to make sure I understand, is that, okay, let's say we spent five thousand dollars on the house. We can put a lien on that property for five thousand dollars, all of our cost, that lien is good for six years, we have to re-up it in six years, and any transaction that happens during the time of that, that house, that lien comes first?
No, not necessarily. I don't, I don't, and I have to look into this, but I don't know what priority we would enjoy in, in that. Now, um, Tom, I don't, I don't know if you would...
It's going to be below any existing lien.
Yeah, exactly.
And on the other hand, there are other liens, such as tax liens, uh, that may, that will obviously take precedent over.
Oh, tax liens are being taken.
Because I, I would like to go ahead.
No, probably taxes being paid. That doesn't mean internal revenue service taxes are being paid.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, we don't live in office places in bankruptcy. You know, we've got to move cautiously, but they should, haven't predicted enough that they'd stay in place, that we would find things, a bankruptcy judge would come afterwards. Uh, so, we have to look carefully.
And that's what would be the questions I ask, is where we're going to place on the lien? lien? Because it's my understanding that, and it may be, you know, any lien that the government puts on this thing, let's say just regular firm clearing the weeds, that becomes a lien and we come first, we're right up there with taxes. We supersede all mortgages and everything else like that on a property. When a, when a local government does something, is required to do that, that lien comes first. And that's what I've been told, and Washington County Tax Assessor told me that about three years ago when I was looking at, well, the sewer bills, do our sewer bills, do they come first at sale of a property?
Yeah.
You can't foreclose on your lien for rebatement and override a first mortgage.
But I'm not gonna argue that, but that's, the Washington County Assessor's Office has something different that they say on that.
I advise the assessor, and I advise the treasurer for over ten years.
Okay. He told me something different, so...
Anyway, I think, I think you're on the right path. You need to get some, give some guidance to Chip, to, so he can make the determination where he's gonna go. You know, if you're going to proceed for some sort of condemnation action to get titled, so you can, that way you can take the property free, you know, basically pretty clear. And if there's no prior order, who knows what's the property's actually gonna be afraid for? And who's gonna have, how are you gonna pay it? So you have a problem, there's problems in this all the way down the line. Ches looked at all this, probably the best approach is what he's currently recommending, and that's go in and do the nuisance abatement.
All right, let's, let's move on. Mr. Carrigan.
Chip, does that motion take care of what you needed to do legally?
You know, legally, I do your bidding. I mean, legally...
No, but I mean, does that take care of the file, you know, you wanted to file a petition to eliminate and abate the nuisance, would that do it, by the way?
That, that would, that would go a long ways toward obviously abating the nuisance. First of all, my main concern is the Washington County Health District's concern as far as the, the obvious problem that's there. My, my perhaps overriding concern is the safety and welfare of our firefighters, who if they get called back again, may be risking their lives to put this out to, you know, protect the other neighbors. So, if, if the direction from the city council is to go in and ask the court that we be allowed to enter private property, clean it up, abate this nuisance, board it up on a semi-permanent manner, put a fence around it, and then give me a court order for a lien for all those services, that's fine, and that we will keep the property at the status quo for now.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
Well, and that, I think that's what we need to do, and my motion does include the inside. Where there's a will, there's a way. You can professionally board it up, if they wanna get in and nobody's paying attention, they're gonna get in. And if we, if somebody gets hurt in there, or even, even the people going in to board it up could fall through the floor. So, you know, I think we should clean it up completely if that's...
Now, a tangent with that, of course, is some type of a landlord relationship, quasi-pseudo-ownership responsibility. In other words, we're cleaning it up, we're boarding it up, we're fencing it off. Now, if somebody gets in there, they injure themselves, or if another situation occurs, will the city be looking at some type of liability? But down the road, I may be back in front of you again going, all right, we've got a new problem with this, do you wanna condemn it? Do you wanna own it? What is it that you wanna do down the road? So...
Well, my motion included cleaning it up, securing the area, and then moving forward with whatever you need to do, to either remove it as a nuisance, or, we can't sell it, but that's up to you legally to find out what we can do. But clean it up first, we've gotta do that.
Well, okay.
And then you follow whatever course you need to do, and whatever, whatever it ends up being, if we end up pulling down, I'm good with that.
Well, now, if I'm gonna file a lawsuit tomorrow, I need to know where I'm going in my lawsuit. I can't just say, Judge, can I just clean this up? And then come back in six months and ask you to tear this down. Do you want me to ask the court to tear it down or not? I mean, I mean, tearing it down...
My opinion is tear it down. It's a nuisance, but clean it up.
One point, I've been through this before on a health department.
For the record, this is Senior Assistant City Attorney Tom Riley, speaking from the gallery here.
From the gallery. Just because you have an order to tear a house down does not mean you have to tear it down. The judge will give you the discretion to do that. He can allow you to tear it down, but you don't have to. So, and on that basis, I, back around to DA's office, we forced an individual to finish a house that was incredible fire hazard and incredible safety hazard. And it may work, something might like that, it might work here, if you can get enough leverage over the owner by virtual destruction order. It has a lot of impact if the property, if the guy wa, if the owner wants the property at all.
Well, you know, I think, I think we're beating this thing up, I think we just need to...
We got a motion on the floor. Do we wanna act on the motion? We have one more question, Ms. Ratty, and then we'll act on the motion.
And it really is just a question. I'm not sure that I fully understand. So, eminent domain, I understand, we go that path, we get it, then it's ours to deal with. But condemnation, how does, how does that work? So, we condemn it, what happens next?
No, we would condemn it, we would get the property.
So, same?
Same thing.
Same outcome? Same outcome, different process to get there?
Yes. Why don't you ask, why don't you allow me to go to the court, ask the court to tear it down? But don't authorize $100,000 just yet to tear it down. Once I get the court order, I can come back and say, okay, I got 100 grand, I mean, I guess, you know, we can do it that way. In the meanwhile, meantime, we get a court order to clean it up and fence it.
That's good.
And that makes a lot of sense to me, because the other concern that I have is the cost. And so, if with a little bit more analysis, we can get to a more cost-effective solution than $75,000 to tear it down, that would also be...
So, you wanna, you wanna withdraw your original motion and then make that sec, next motion?
Yes, I'll withdraw.
Okay. So, do you wanna make new motion?
Does he withdraw a second? Mr. Schmidt?
Withdraw my second.
Okay, the new motion, if I can get this right, is the health department should go to the courts to get an order to clean it up.
No.
You'll go, you'll do both of them?
I'll do one.
Okay. And, and you'll, you'll go to court to demolish the building?
I will.
Okay.
Okay.
And another order to clean it up.
I know some EOD guys...
Do we have a second?
...six-pack and that.
Yeah. I'll second with an amendment.
Okay, go ahead. What's your amendment?
You know, I'd like to go ahead, if we could just make it clear that we were authorizing the city attorney to go to court to ask to tear it down, but we're not authorizing the city attorney to tear it down.
Not authorizing it, correct.
We are not auth, the city council is not authorizing it to be torn down, we're only going to court to ask the courts for permission to tear it down.
Okay.
You have to come back to us for any further action other than the cleanup process.
Okay, everybody understand the motion? Anybody understand the motion?
Anybody care?
Ms. Ratty.
I just wanna clarify that last statement, other than the cleanup process and the securing the house process, because that, that is also...
Yep.
If the maker of the motion agrees with that.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, you have your marching orders there, Mr. Adams?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, appreciate it. Okay, 6.3, consideration, possible adoption of Resolution Number 3186, authorizing the transfer of the City of Sparks 2010 state volume bond cap share of $4,574,101 to the Nevada Department of Business and Industry for the First-Time Home Buyer Program offered by Nevada Housing Division and Nevada Rural Housing Authority. Mr. Graham, welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, staff, City Attorney. Thank you for the record. My name's George Graham, Austin Specialist, City Attorney. And coming before you this evening for consideration, and thank you, I don't know if everyone heard me prior, all of what I said. Okay, great. Because I don't really have a loud voice. But consideration and possible adoption of the Resolution 3186 for the allocation and transfer of our bond cap, volume bond cap for Nevada Housing Division, equally between Nevada Housing Division and Nevada Rural Housing Authority. Last year, we elected to have our bond cap allocated to a project, and we did realize some community contribution from both entities as far as in the first-time home buyer program. And we're looking to be able to assist them through the bond cap for this year. The amount you see of $4,574 is last year's bond cap, which will be adjusted once we know the actual for 2010. That, that number was not available at the time, as far as based on population and all. But I'm looking, I would like your consideration and approval of the allocation. And now, if there's any questions or anything I would love to address.
Questions for Mr. Okay, seeing no questions, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
Happy to make a motion. I guess you have, I guess you have any comments?
I'm sorry, I wish I would've, yeah, I apologize.
Go ahead.
I'd like to introduce Gary Longacker of the Executive Director of the Nevada Rural Housing Authority, which is one of our partners, one of my partners that I've been fortunate to work over the last few years, not with just this program, but in a few other things. So, Gary also may like to speak and address any questions. I thank you, Councilman.
Anything you'd like to say, Gary?
If you're getting ready to make a motion to pass, I'm not saying the word, Mayor.
Good point. You've been through this before, haven't you?
Yes, I have. It has been a great partnership with the city.
It has. Go ahead, Julia.
So, I move for adoption of Resolution Number 3186 to authorize the Nevada Department of Business and Industry to transfer and allocate the city's 2010 tax-exempt volume cap to be equally split between the Nevada Housing Division and the Nevada Rural Housing Authority for the purpose of implementing their first-time home buyer programs in the Sparks community.
You have a second? Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve Resolution 3186. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, George. Thanks, Gary.
Thanks so much for all that great work.
Okay, 6.4 is the first reading.
Bill Number 622, An Ordinance Amendment in Sparks National Code relating to motor vehicles prohibiting excessive noise from electronics and electric devices within motor vehicles and allowing other matters to be related to...
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2622. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, September 13th, 2010. Questions? Mr. Carrigan?
On this, I tried to find, is there any decibels, you know, attached to this? Because how are we, how are we going to uphold this if we write it in as an ordinance? We can't even stop dogs from barking in my neighborhood.
I appreciate that myself.
Are they playing the radio?
Yeah.
Playing the radio.
There, I read a 90-page statement on these types of ordinances that was done by the Justice Department, and was forwarded to me with a lot of other materials from the city of Reno, who've been very helpful in getting this type of an ordinance drafted. And the decibel measurement as a device for noise citation, if you will, the decibel, the use of the decibel system, the use of decibel readings is too inaccurate to be used on motor vehicles.
Then how are we gonna, how are we gonna uphold this?
You use a...
Somebody's gonna say, I heard somebody playing loud music out of their car, and that's gonna be good enough to go to court with?
Well, obviously, it has to be somebody that is, has the power to cite, to issue citations.
Okay, so I'm a cop, and I write down that it was loud, and I go to court, and the person that owned the car said, no, it wasn't.
Well, it has to be...
You know, and his attorney's gonna say, what's your evidence that it was loud?
And the evidence would be simply that the officer has normal hearing, and that he was standing at a distance of more than 25 feet from the motor vehicle. He heard the car, or he heard the noise, whatever the noise is. Not, not, not exhaust noise, that's a whole different scenario. We're talking electronically amplified noises coming from within, or if sometimes on top of the car, or out of the trunk. But basically, electronic. And the, this particular type of measurement, just using the human ear, has been upheld in every court I have founded in, and there's a lot of them. I had no idea there'd been so many decisions on this particular matter, but noise, noise abatement in big cities especially is, has been a real important item for city councils, county commissioners, et cetera, ever since the introduction of the sound trucks. I don't know if you've ever heard about those, but the, back in the 20s, they had these sound trucks that just would go through and just, I mean, the, the great big speaker in front of them was bigger than the car itself.
Yeah, but, you know, that's, that's not the problem I see here. The problem is, you can't, so a police officer's gonna be the one that makes the call on this.
Right.
So, if you...
Yeah. You have to have some standard, and that's the standard. The other item we have in here is there's no set distance from the vehicle that the officer has to be. Most of the cases involve 25 to 50 to 100 feet. There's been a lot of cases upholding hearing the noise at 25 feet. So, we started off with the 25-foot distance in this proposed ordinance. There's nothing to say that the city council can't modify that. If you wanted to change that during second reading and adoption, it can be done right there on the spot. The main goal here is to try and get something in place, so the inane noises that we have to put up with, especially when we're stuck in traffic with concussion-making booms, is the type of thing this ordinance is restricted, is aimed at. And in discussing this matter with the chief of police, he's noted that, and I'm not gonna get into the details, but he has simply noted that obviously there's a matter of discretion involved here on, on the officer's part. The discretion will be exercised wisely and legally, I would assume. I mean, they, officers know they cannot favor one type of speech over another. They have to allow all different types of speech to be made. They're, they're even taught that in the academy. And so, we have a basis there for an even-handed administration of this. But there is some discretion involved, obviously, in the exercise of any law enforcement activities.
Okay, other questions? Ms. Ratty?
So, you said exhaust is a completely different story, so explain to me how the concussion-making booms from a loud engine are different from the concussion-making booms of a loud stereo?
The difference is in the law. There is a whole body of NRS that applies to vehicle noises that emanate from exhaust pipes, and that is an entirely separate matter. That is on a decibel basis, because a, you have the opportunity to measure that noise from, if your car's pulled over, then they can put a test to it on a standing basis. The car does not have to be moving. You could test the decibel level at an idle, you could test that at certain RPMs. That's how the, that's how the vehicle noise is tested by generally the highway patrol. But I think some of the cities, I'm not sure about Sparks, but some of the cities also have decibel meters, and there's a test involved for vehicle noise, motor noise.
So, we don't currently have a ordinance that deals with vehicle exhaust noise and decibels, or we do?
I, I'm not 100% sure if we do or not. I would assume there was something, yeah.
So, my concern would be that we start setting up a scenario that we are unequally, if we do have an ordinance, that we're unequally following those laws. That it's okay to be loud if you're driving a Harley, but it's not okay to be loud if you're a teen blasting music.
I never...
That's my concern.
I never said... I never said it's okay to be loud if you're driving a Harley.
But if we're enforcing one and not enforcing the other because we feel like we're on a safer legal ground, or for whatever reason?
I don't know what the reason would be if, perhaps it's just simply that the vehicle noise levels are, the allowable levels are higher than people are willing to tolerate with other types of noise? I don't know.
But keep in mind, this has to do with amplified sound, too. That's, you know, this, this is amplified sound coming, emanating from vehicles, as compared to your Harley's, which is exhaust and covered over, covered in a different, a different provision. Now, I'm sure you're gonna get people saying, "Well, you allow the Harley's, but you don't like, you know, country western," or whatever. But that's, that's, that's neither here nor there. There's no constitutional violations. You have no, no equal protection arguments as far as driving with a radio as compared to a Harley.
Okay. I guess my concern is, the number, the number of comments that I got from people really all centered around loud exhaust, you know, how, how it gets extended, and so-
Well, you know, I, I think that's, that's obviously a legitimate concern, and the way to address that's through the legislature, tighten up the laws, especially on unmuffled motorcycles. For some reason, you don't seem to find unmuffled cars. I guess because they're really loud. But sometimes you do, but for the most part, it's unmuffled motorcycles. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first want to thank Councilman Smith for, for getting this back on the agenda. I can say that, you know, we've, in one form or another, we've had these discussions for the last nine years, and we're closer now than we ever have to actually having something to, to be able to work with. And it, but I still have some, some concerns because it, truly, this law is subjective, correct? You said there's discretionary, but this is subjective.
There's discretion involved. It's not supposed to be administered, administrated subjectively. It's an objective standard. If you can hear it at 25 feet, it's too loud. That's your standard.
A 90-decibel rock and roll song could be treated less important than a 90-decibel rap song.
Technically, it could.
It's all, it's all subjective to what you're, what you're looking at.
If the standard is not subjective, its application can be subjective.
So my question goes back to what I've asked for nine years. Why can't we do a noise ordinance? Why can't we have decibel machines that people can go ahead and carry in their vehicle? Why can't we do that stuff?
Let me, let me explain that a little bit more on the decibel. I started to explain about the Justice Department manual, and I guess I got sidetracked. The Justice Department manual shows that the application of the decibel standard to trying to limit noise is totally unworkable. The problems are mainly scientific, I guess would be the best way to put it. They're environmental and scientific. The noises, especially from a moving object, vary immensely. And there's a back, when you, when you're trying to measure the noise of a car going down the street, for example, there's all the other traffic around you interfering with that standard, interfering with that measurement. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a practical problem in using a decibel system. It's just the decibel measure, it just doesn't work well. And the, the agencies that have tried using it have ceased using it and have gone over to the standard.
So there's no device at all in the history of recording noise that isolated the highest decibel sound around? In other words, if I went out there and five cars started on up, I couldn't tell? There's nothing that would tell me what the, what the loudest car?
You could tell, but the decibel meter couldn't tell.
Okay. Then my next question goes to that, you know, this is all, what is this effect in residential neighborhoods, not noise coming out of a vehicle, but coming out of somebody's backyard?
That's a whole different standard. We're not, this is, this ordinance is not intended to address that.
So in my neighborhood where, you know, the porch is 20 feet from my back porch is a neighbor's back porch, if he fires up his car and cranks out the music and has a party in his yard, he can get, he can get a citation for it. But if he cranks up his stereo in his back patio, he doesn't get in trouble for it?
I wouldn't say that he doesn't get in trouble for that. We still have a disturbing the peace ordinance that the officers use.
If they, comes after 11 o'clock at night, they'll use it. If it's before 11 o'clock at night, they don't care.
How it's administered is up to the police department. I'm not aware of that. But there is, there is a standard.
I, you know, I just think there has to be some way that there's a little bit more solid way of being able to record this thing, that, you know, that it's just not gonna be my word against somebody else's, and it has to apply to everybody for noise. It can't be, you know, coming from a vehicle and that's it. You know, it has to be, we, we, we have an issue with a noise ordinance in this city. We don't have one.
Well, what we've got is you've got a lot of separate types of noise sources, and we're trying to address one source. The, the sources vary, and enforcement on those sources is going to vary. You can't have a same kind of, necessarily have the same kind of enforcement for every noise source. So I think what you need to look at, Councilman, is we're simply trying to address one problem at a time. And if this is satisfactory, then maybe this type of standard could be applied elsewhere. This type of a distance standard has been applied on real estate. In a lot of lawsuits, I've, a lot of cases I've read, it's applied in the same type of scenario. Sometimes the distances are more, but it varies state to state, county to county, city to city. And, but all we're trying to do here right now is to get a start and to start working on the one problem that annoys people probably more commonly than residential even, and that is other vehicles making a lot of noise in traffic. And there's, you're sitting there and you can't do a thing about it. And there's nothing the police can do about it. We're trying to give them a tool so we can calm down the traffic noise, is all it is.
Steve Kiefer for the record, and I just wanted to clarify on that. There, there are different types of noise, and to even make matters worse, disturbing the peace is a misdemeanor, but it's an offense that an officer's peace can't be disturbed. So even if it's 2:00 in the morning and the officer hears your neighbor's stereo loud from the house, doesn't make that arrest themselves. They're gonna have you sign the complaint, or the complainant sign. What this ordinance does, it allows that officer to have the ability to cite. And there's a letter of the law, intent of the law, and the application is subjective. And there's 109 sworn officers, and there's gonna be different variations. My intention is to give them that ability to use sound discretion in those extreme cases when you're in traffic and you've been with your family or by yourself and you're upset because the vehicle behind you has the, the bass so loud that your rearview mirror vibrates. Those are the ones, because those people will call later, but we're not gonna do anything with that. They don't have a license plate, it happened an hour ago. It's subjective. I don't think there's gonna be a clear black and white cookie-cutter approach to this other than good training and a law that is defendable, especially with the First Amendment, and the disturbing the peace is a totally different category, as well as a loud exhaust is a different muni code, so.
Can I make sure I understand you correctly? I understood that the officer had to hear the vehicle? Now, you're saying that's not the case, that somebody could call and make the complaint?
No, I'm saying what happens now, yeah, what happens now is people call and will complain that they were in traffic and a vehicle was very loud. The odds of us finding that person and them admitting it was them, or having that citizen identify them, it's a lot of work for a charge, it's probably gonna go nowhere. In disturbing the peace with, with residential, whether it's a party or music coming from the house, it's a traditional party, if an officer gets on scene and the neighbor across the street wants to, wants it stopped, we'll go ask the person to shut the party down, but we're not gonna issue a citation because the, the officer doesn't have the authority. It's gonna take it back to the reporting party and have them sign a complaint. Does that answer that?
Yeah, and I think that's part of where we're at, is because we don't, you know that if you're gonna have a party at your house, nothing's gonna happen to you. I mean, the cops are gonna show up, say you need to stop. Okay, we'll do that. 10 minutes later, it starts back up again, the third and the fourth and the fifth time, they're there, they know nothing's gonna happen. So, I mean, that is tradition. Am I correct? I mean, that's the way we handle things in the city of Sparks, so the citizens that are around that have to put up with that over, over again until 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning time, till somebody decides that they're partied out and time to go home.
Or the reporting party signs a complaint.
Yeah, but, I mean, I don't, not sure that that's fair either, you know? When, when you can walk in, you can see that it's, you know, it's disturbing the peace, you're the officer there, but you don't take action. And they, and everybody knows it. That's what the, that's, that's the calls that I get. I don't get the calls about the mufflers or the boom boxes and stuff like that. I mean, but the calls I get are people said, "How come we continue to allow house parties go on and we have no way to stop it?" And I get the thing, "Well, it's disturbing the peace, we can, we can cite him with that." But we never do that, and everybody knows it.
Different animal, right now.
Ms. Ratty?
Well, I guess-
Let's beat this up some more.
Yeah, that's pretty much answered my question, because I wanted to understand what the difference was between disturbing the peace and this ordinance. With just then one follow-up question, and I'm not sure who gets it, is why wouldn't we just amend the disturbing the peace ordinance to allow an officer to cite and allow, because disturbing the peace is not necessarily specific to a residence, right? It's, if you're disturbing the peace, anywhere, anybody's peace.
Absolutely. It went back from, you know, vulgar language that would disturb your peace with your family. An officer could get chewed out for five minutes and can't do anything with that, so.
So why wouldn't we just amend the disturbing the peace to allow officers to cite?
It's too, it's too nonspecific. That is, obviously, there's a lot of problems with disturbing the peace ordinance. Why would you even wanna get involved in using that? If you wanna do something effective, if you wanna do something that's gonna be effective, do something new. Because obviously, the disturbing the peace ordinance is not that effective.
But is it possible that it's not that effective because officers can't cite?
I have, I couldn't tell you that.
It's not effective because nobody will sign a complaint.
Well, you have to-
But if you take out the need for somebody to sign a complaint.
Therein lies the problem. Everybody wants the police to do something, but they're not willing to step up and sign a complaint.
You know, I think it's a good point. If, if we could change disturbing the peace and allow an officer's peace to be disturbed, I don't know enough in the history behind it to why we could. It was one of those things, is I was hired on to the city attorney's office, wouldn't move forward with that because a peace officer's rights, or a peace office, a peace officer's peace can't be disturbed. It's one of those things, I don't know where it started from or originated from, but for 20 years, I knew that was something we couldn't do. So I think it's worth, worth research to see exactly why.
Chad, are we a little off the subject here?
I was just, I was just gonna, yeah, touch on that real quick. You'll notice my buttons push here real quick. The, a couple of different things. First of all, I don't want people to think that this particular law that we're looking at today is subjective or discretionary. It's just as subjective and it is just as discretionary as every other law on ordinance and state law. And the vast prime court has recognized that. Whether or not to cite is a discretionary act. But what I wanted to point out is that, and I wanna thank Mr. Riley and the chief for showing up, but I kinda get the feeling that we're, we're here defending this, we're, we're bringing up a particular law, a particular ordinance pursuant to Councilman Smith's request. And we have no stake in this. We don't really care whether it's passed or not. We're just presenting you with what we believe to be the, the best law that, under the circumstances pursuant to the request that's been made to us, so.
Mr. Smith?
You know, we're not inventing the wheel here. Other cities are doing this, Reno just did this. I've had fillings replaced sitting next to some of this music that, sitting at the stop sign. I don't wanna punish anybody, but sometimes it's pretty irritating. It's the only reason, if you don't like it, next week, two weeks, don't vote for it. That's all I can tell you.
Okay, I think we're done.
Thank you.
It's a first reading.
It's not bad for a first reading, huh?
You're gonna be here for a second, you better be prepared there, pal.
I'll be here.
6.5, presentation, discussion, and possible action on the completion and publishing of the Assembly Bill Number 494, report to the Nevada Legislative Council Bureau, due September 1st, 2010. We don't wanna rush into anything, do we?
I have a question on page 385 of that.
Yes, sir, go ahead. From memory.
As he knows.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, for the record. As you know, we discussed about six weeks ago, and I presented you with a draft copy of our response to Assembly Bill 494 from the 2009 session. Since that point in time, I have taken notes and observations from several folks, and this is basically time and place for any last-minute adjustments that the council might want that's beyond the clerical things that I've received from some other departments in order for us to meet the September 1st filing deadline. I'll just quickly go over a couple of things that, that were there. Our Public Works folks did find a couple more things that are, that should have been on the, we're already doing something list that we have. In addition to that, I did receive some comments from the Reno City Attorney that I've confirmed with our city attorney's office. And while in item number, in item number three, starting at page eight, I had properly kinda delineated the Sparks City Charter, Chapter 470 statutes of Nevada 1975, and then I called them NRS 470, because we refer to it from time to time as that. Mr. Catlick, and then along with our city attorney's office, felt that that might be confusing to people, because I'm really kind of mixing NRS and administrative chapters. So I will go through in every place that I've said NRS 470, we'll change it to Chapter 470, clarify, it just eliminates any potential for misunderstanding or misclarification on that. It's not technically wrong, but we don't want it to, to have any issues. Beyond that, I really don't have anything else that's been brought to my attention. There were a couple of things from some of the, the reports that we put in as additional addendums, and while it's lovely that there was mistakes and people found them, they're already documents on the record, we can't make any change to them, they are what they are, but we appreciate people taking time to look at them. So this would be time and place that if the council has anything else that they feel that we, you know, missed or would like to modify in the written part, the first 44 pages, if you will, I'll take those under consideration. Otherwise, I'll take the things that I know that need to be quickly fixed that are typographical, we'll clean it up, we'll put a cover on it, we'll deliver it on time on your behalf.
Okay, questions for Mr. Driscoll, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, thank you for yourself and all the staff that's been involved in this. I know this has been a long process since the legislative session and, you know, the last three years in dealing with this stuff and putting it all together and, you know, I wish you guys the, the best of luck down there in Carson City with this item and, you know, whatever we can do to help defend it and make it possible, let us, let us know, because I think this is, this is truly where they're, they're either gonna make us or break us, one of the two. You know, it's, I think they're on a mission and they know what they want, and they're gonna find holes in the report if it doesn't tell the story that they want. So my, my question is, has Reno and Washoe County's combined report, is it, is it available yet?
Steve Driscoll, for the record, yes. They, they produced their report. It's dated August 16th. It was from Mr. Childs to the Board of County Commissioners on behalf of the, of the shared study. They're produced, they've actually produced a document, and then they have a CD-ROM that's attached to it that has similar studies. And then they did about 50 pieces of analysis on departments, sub-departments, for their 21 questions, can it be consolidated? They've put all that information together. We're trying to get a copy of the CD-ROM. We have from the internet a copy of the report. As soon as I can pull those two together, I'll have them available for us.
Do they give recommendations on cost savings for their consolidation?
No, sir, they do not. They specifically state that they've not done that, and that they also tried to note that while their study- they also try to note that while their studies show theoretical ability to consolidate, that there's governance issues and other things that clearly get in the way from being able to just go do this. And until you can answer some of those questions, the costing component is not capable. You're not capable of doing costing component.
And anywhere in their report, did they talk about unfunded liabilities or debt structure?
I have not finished reading their report in the first, in the preamble. In the beginning chapter, there is nothing in the executive summary of the preamble to that, but I'm not through their written report yet.
Thank you. Thank you. Good luck.
Why would they make that point? It doesn't go to their case. That's not a point they want to make.
Just getting it on record. Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'm looking for a motion that would allow me to make the final modifications as needed and to then publish on time and deliver on time.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'd make a motion to do exactly just that. Thank you again.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to move forward with the report, with revisions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. 6.6, motion to conduct. You don't need that, Sean?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Public hearing, 7.1, public hearing consideration and possible approval of an abandonment of 5.5 feet by 120 foot per portion of the side of E Street Road right away. Who's doing this? No one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Seidel, go ahead, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, this is a conjunction item with 5.14. I need to abstain from this item.
Okay. Go ahead, Wayne.
Mayor, members of the council, Wayne Seidel, Public Works Director. I have before you today a request for an abandonment by Jim and Marilyn Hester Lee, and it's RGL Properties LLC. And they've requested 5.5 foot of abandonment along Avenue E and Fourth Street, a few blocks south of here. Staff supports the abandonment. The sidewalk will be moved to be placed along behind the curvy gutter. And so it works well with the right of way, and we'd recommend abandonment at this time. It does put 1,219 square feet of right of way back into private ownership, and we'd get property taxes on that.
Okay, questions? Okay. This is a public hearing, so open to public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We're going to met the council for action. Looking for a motion or more questions. Mr. Schmidt?
Moved to approve the abandonment of portions of E Street and Fourth Street as outlined by staff.
Have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan to approve 7.1 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Sorry, I was supposed to abstain, Mr. Schmidt.
Okay, it passes three zip with one abstention. Mr. Schmidt, let the record show that Mr. Schmidt abstained.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Wayne. Moving on, comments from the council and city manager. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of announcements regarding committee appointments which are available to the public. There is currently one vacancy for the Sparks Advisory Committee for the Disabled for a one-year term. Persons interested in this position should have a knowledge of the challenges faced by the disabled community. There's also one vacancy on the Washoe Story Conservation District Board of Supervisors. I would note that this is a joint appointment with the city of Reno. Applicants should have a background in hydrology, watersheds, natural resources, water or wetlands management. Persons interested in serving on either of these committees should complete a community service application available from the Sparks City Clerk's Office. You may also apply online at our city website, which is www.cityofsparks.us, and simply follow the communications to the governing tab and then on to the community service application. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on Friday, September 3, 2010, at which time they will be forwarded to the mayor for his considerations and further action. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Ms. Ratty?
I just wanted to quickly thank myself and everyone else for making Sarah's last meeting so simple and concise and enjoyable.
Keep up, have fun in your next life. Mr. Kerrigan?
Yeah, and I want to apologize for opening that can of worms with my one question about the sound ordinance. So I wanted to shoot myself after that, so.
Well, there's others up here that would have accommodated you, I'm sure.
He would have supplied something.
Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Okay, we'll call the order, the redevelopment agency meeting for Monday, July 26, with a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith?
Here?
Agency Secretary Brooks present. Agency Member Ratty?
Here.
Salano, absent. Martini?
Here.
Kerrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Carey?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Okay, I'll open it up for public comments. I don't have any cards. Holy moly there. Would anybody like to speak at this time? I'll bring it back to the agency. Approval of the agenda?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I heard one, so that's unanimous. Moving to recommendation to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 26, 2010?
Moved to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 26. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, report of claims and bills approved of payment and appropriation transfers for the period of July 8, 2010, through August 4, 2010. Get a motion?
Moved to approve, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Comments from the agency?
I'm a hump bug.
Julia?
I'd just suggest you go back to Sound Booth and make your call.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, any other comments? We are adjourned.